I would like to call to order the October 14th, 2014 meeting of the Newport Beach City Council and would ask for a roll call please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
I would ask that you stand and follow me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing with our invocation by Councilman Keith Curry. Please place your hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in an attitude of prayer. Our Father and God, we are children from around the world gathered tonight to ask humbly for your wisdom and guidance in the decisions that we make. We ask for compassion upon our fellow citizens and we ask that you would give us vision for our community in all that we do and all the decisions that we make. In a few short weeks, Americans across our country will enter into the great cathedral of democracy and cast their votes. We ask for our people across this land for wisdom in that decision, that your will would truly be done in our great country. In your name we pray. Amen.
This evening, we have the opportunity of greeting some visitors that we have with us from Japan and so I'm going to come down to the main floor, of which time we will present a proclamation and provide our visitors with some gifts, so. Going to start with a proclamation welcoming our visitors and I'm going to ask Seth to come up with his wife, beautiful wife, I will add. And they will serve as the translator, plural, for this proclamation. This is a proclamation of the city of Newport Beach, California, thanking our sister city of Okazaki, Japan, for its sister-city partnership with our city.
America, California, Newport Beach City, Japan, and Okazaki City, Japan, in 1984, on 11/27/2014, we became friends.
And it begins, "Whereas the city of Newport Beach, California, USA formalized a sister-city relationship with Okazaki, Japan on November 27, 1984."
I want to say again, America, California, Newport Beach City, Japan, and Okazaki City, Japan, in 1984, on 11/27/2014, we became friends.
And whereas the members of the Rotary Clubs of Okazaki South Rotary District 2760 and of Newport Balboa Rotary District 5320.
The Rotary Club of Okazaki South Rotary District 2760 and the Rotary Club of Newport Balboa Rotary Club, they formed special connections between them.
And whereas the members of the Sister City Association in Newport Beach and Okazaki have served to support activities between and within their respective cities and continue to promote the program as broadly as possible.
This is a partnership, and Okazaki City and Okazaki City's Friends Association has expanded their contacts and interacted with each other, and made friendships more extensive. Both friends have visited each other, and exchanged gifts of friendship that have served to benefit the two communities. Yes, I'm going to repeat, but I'm sorry. The two cities, as I said earlier, have expanded their contacts and interacted with each other, and made friendships more extensive. Both friends have visited each other, and exchanged gifts of friendship that have served to benefit the two communities. Yes, I'm going to repeat, but I'm sorry. The two cities, as I said earlier, have expanded their contacts and interacted with each other, and made friendships more extensive.
And whereas both cities have pursued ways to provide cultural exchanges and encouraged the participation of its citizens to share historical, cultural, and educational experiences.
Yes, I'm going to repeat, but I'm sorry. They have expanded their contacts and interacted with each other, and made friendships more extensive. They have established new contacts.
And opportunities for interaction with as many citizens as possible have resulted in the forming of new friendships, the furthering of cultural understanding, and the promotion of goodwill.
Yes, I'm going to repeat, but I'm sorry. As they have expanded their contacts, many citizens have expanded their friendships through these two friends' relationships. And they have expanded their cultural contacts and made friendships more extensive.
Now therefore, I Rush Hill, Mayor of the city of Newport Beach, on behalf of the city council and the Newport Beach community, do hereby acknowledge and commemorate the 30th anniversary of the sister-city affiliation between Newport Beach, USA and Okazaki, Japan.
I, Rush Hill, am the chairman of Newport Beach City, and the community of Newport Beach City, and I represent the US, the US, and the Japanese, Okazaki City, and I represent the Japanese, Okazaki City, and I represent the Japanese, Okazaki City, and I represent the Japanese, Okazaki City.
In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Newport Beach to be affixed on this 7th day of October, 2014.
On 10/7/2014, I represent the Japanese, Okazaki City.
Mr. Mayor.
This is legally recognized.
I am very pleased to present you with this proclamation, which signifies the relationship of our sister cities and its 30th year celebration. Thank you. Now, we have more. We have a key to the city, and the plaque.
This is a plaque, but what does it say?
In honor of 30 years of supporting and fostering the relationship between the cities of Okazaki, Japan, and Newport Beach, California.
The Japanese, Okazaki City, and the American, Newport City, Japanese, Okazaki City, and the California, 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 Newport[1686.48] Next, Ms. Kyoko Fukui. Next, Mr. Nobu Fukui. Next, Ms. Junko Hoshino. Next, Ms. Keika Yoshida. Next, Mr. Masahiro Takeya. And lastly, a special guest, Ms. Yuka Shimura, Mayor's niece. Thank you very much.
We have one other present for you. This calls Hikime Kabura. And this is, we present Happy Time.
Okay, this is called Hikime Kaburaya. This is the ornament arrow that is given as a gift for childbirth and housewarming party, like a happy occasion. It's a very special present. That we will present this arrow as a commemoration of our long-lasting friendship between both cities, to be cultivated and nurtured next fifty and hundred years to come.
So that the relationship moves straight as an arrow. The arrow is a symbol that constitutes continuity and progression.
The childbirth worried me a little. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, sayonara. The delegation also have other presents for... Yes, please, for the council members. We'll do it quickly. We're sorry to keep you waiting. What you'll see here is a range of gifts that represent both the crafts, the culture, and the history of Okazaki.
We are delighted with your visit, and we hope that you continue to enjoy our environment. And we're very pleased to have you with us. Thank you.
With that, we're going to excuse ourselves. The delegation is extremely nervous that we're leaving in the middle of your meeting and interrupting the meeting by leaving. But if you'll forgive us, we'll be taking our leave. Thank you so much.
Thank you. While they are leaving, I hope staff saw the way we were greeted. That's all I'll say.
Please tell her how much we appreciated. Her dancing was wonderful today.
Mayor Hill, it's the consensus of the staff that we're always happy to send you arrows.
I see. Well, it's the consensus of the council that you do quite well at it, yes.
You can pick a few out of my back any time.
All right. Is Mr. Gary Brown with us this evening?
I haven't seen Gary.
Our next presentation, if you will, is the 2014 Friends of the Coast, Coast Keepers Award. And on Wednesday of this last week, the Orange County Coast Keepers held their 2014 Toast of the Coast event at the Pelican Hill Resort. And we were very pleased to have council members Curry, Dagel, and Petros attend, representing the city, as did the city manager and our Public Works Director. At the event, the Coastal Keepers also celebrated its fifteenth birthday and took the time to make two awards. The only award to a city went to the city of Newport Beach for its longstanding commitment to clean water and a thriving marine environment. You may applaud. The city manager has the award on display this evening. And the Coastal Keepers have... The Coast Keepers, thank you, has been an important partner with the city in a variety of great projects: restoring eel grass habitat where it shouldn't be, and that means not under docks, and restoring our kelp forest offshore, helping fight calpura taxifolia. And that's an invasive plant released from someone's aquarium in a neighboring town. And... That was supposed to be funny. And we started working with them almost a full fifteen years ago when Coast Keepers identified the Rhine Channel's toxic sediment as something that should be higher on everyone's radar screen than it was. And in fact, was where we had the opportunity of beginning our dredging of the harbor. So we're very pleased to receive this award and pleased with the partnership we have developed with the Orange County Coast Keeper Organization. And on the topic of awards, I think we don't celebrate our successes quite enough. And so I had staff put together the recent awards that the city has received. The Natural Resource Defense Council's Five-Star Beaches for Newport Beach in both 2011 and 2013, the cleanest beaches on the coast. Orange County Taxpayers Association in 2013, the Rose Award for Pension Reform. The League of California Cities Helen Putnam Award for Facilities Financing Plan that was created in 2008 and still enforced. FEMA's 2012 Individual and Community Preparedness Award for the outstanding CERT initiatives that we have. And many of our CERT people left, but we're here, dressed in Japanese regalia. And AAA implied agency ratings for each of the three major rating agencies, Fitch, Moody's, and Standard Poor's, reaffirmed in 2014 for our AAA rating. And the Excellent Finance and Report Certificate of Achievement for our Consolidated Annual Financial Reports for 2013 from the Government Finance Officers Association. All of those awards go to the strong efforts of our incredible staff in their effort to be as transparent and as forthrighting as absolutely possible. So congratulations to staff. Congratulations to the community for a job well done on a very broad basis. And with that, we are going to have Simone. Is Simone here? I think you're going to handle the next presentation, which is from the Insurance Service Organization Award to the Building Division as a Class One designation.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potam and council members. I want to introduce Ralph Doryo from the ISO, who's going to be making the presentation and a little background about the ISO.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council and staff and citizens of Newport Beach, California. I just, a real brief history. ISO has been involved in evaluating building code departments since 1995. We have evaluated approximately 20,000 individual building code departments. And we have, over the course of those years, evaluated several Class One building code departments. Class One being what we consider exemplary in support from their community and training and certification of their people for the staff. In those fifteen years, this evening, accounts for the third time that we have awarded a Class One for the second time to a community. So this award for maintaining, that standard of building code enforcement efficiency is important, that it looks at the support from the community, and it affects everyone who lives and works in the community so that they don't have to worry about where they go or what they do, that they know that these fine ladies and gentlemen who do their jobs so well make the buildings that they're in safe for them in every occasion. And I'm very proud to be here again for the second time to present this award. And thank you very much for the support of the council, continued support of the council, even with changes in the hierarchy of the building code department, that the system is built in and it is incorporated within the working staff so that everything can continue to run smoothly. I congratulate you on your efforts, the council, the department. And I want to say to the citizens that you should be very thankful that these people are here doing what they do every day. Thank you.
I would just... Simone, would you like to make any further remarks?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you to the support of the city council, to the city manager and our Community Development Director, Kim Brandt. It is from the support of everybody that we were able to succeed. And it's such an honor and pleasure to work in this community. So thank you again. We are presented with this plaque, and we'd love for the mayor, when you're free, to take a quick picture with our plaque.
All right, if we don't do it now? Those of you that don't live in the arena of building permits all the time might not also realize that because of this designation, the insurance industry looks at the construction in this town as being of the highest of quality. And most companies actually will offer a lower rate of insuring because of that. So we're very proud of the award for the second time, and we thank you very much. And with that, Madam Clerk, we'll go to notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda.
All right, Councilwoman Gardner.
Tomorrow night, Wednesday, is another opportunity to hear the candidates and also debate on Measure Y. It will be sponsored by the Coronation Mar Residents Association, beginning at 5:30 at the Oasis Senior Center. I also have two items to be placed by the city manager on the council to see if the... On the agenda to see if the council would like to address them. The first is news racks. Coronation Mar, the Business Improvement District, has been working to improve the news racks. It's a very difficult thing. Babo Island has a special ordinance that allows it to do that, to improve them. Coronation Mar would like the same kind of ordinance so it could deal with the messiness of its news racks. And secondly, food trucks. It seems to me we are in... Sort of have the worst of both worlds in our food truck ordinance. We supposedly don't allow them. So the new food trucks, which might be really exciting, don't come because they know they're not allowed. But yet, the, what used to be called roach coaches, sneak in sometimes. And apparently, we don't really do much about it. So see if the council would like to address the whole food truck issue. Thank you.
Councilwoman Petros.
It's been a busy week. I got the opportunity to attend the Fire Open House. We have a couple of photos of that. Held over the weekend, a wonderful event. I cannot even tell you how many folks were there. There had to have been at least a hundred, if not more. Hosted by our fire department, very well attended. There were examples of rescues, of auto accident rescues. And the fire, there's... They cut the top off of that car on its side and rescued a person out of there. Amazing, in record time. Incredible day. Children running through all of the fire equipment and getting to drive the ambulances. It was really, really tremendous. A wonderful day. We should all be proud of the service and the quality of service that our fire department provides for us. Moving on to other items, the Orange County Sanitation District Project is going full-tilt. Oh, I'm sorry, I also forgot that. I was, attended the Okazaki Students. They made a presentation at the Coronation Mar High School and made, did dances, exchanged gifts. It was really, really a wonderful event. And it was very, very telling that the young people got along with each other, that our students were well-behaved and very engaged, wanting to understand what our visitors were here to offer. And the young people from Japan were very open and cordial and warm to our young people. So it was a wonderful and enlightening day. Now on to the other things. The Sand District Project is underway through Mariners Mile. I just want to, I'll make this announcement every meeting as this goes on. This is a necessity that is ongoing through the Mariners Mile Corridor where the sewer main is being replaced. It is a messy operation. It will create a lot of nuisance and congestion, but it is absolutely necessary. Please realize, this is a project of the sanitation district. It is being conducted in the street owned by Caltrans. So unfortunately, the city of Newport Beach has very little sway over this. But that sway that we do have, we are exercising as diligently as we can for the benefit of our businesses and residents. And very briefly, I was hoping that our Public Works Director, Don Webb, could make some comments on that. Dave Webb.
I actually think Don's here tonight, but...
I just saw him out there, I'm sorry.
Thank you. As you notice, it is a project by an outside agency within the city, and we do have less control of it because it is the Orange County Sanitation District in the Caltrans right away. We are making a concerted effort, though, to make sure that that project runs as smooth as possible. Council has expressed a lot of concern to make sure that the traffic flows as best as possible and the impacts are minimized to the residents. We have staff, Mark Vakoyevich, our deputy director, city engineers, daily working on that project. I sit on a weekly meeting now with their management to go through issues. We are making suggestions and changes, and some of them they're implementing right away to help alleviate traffic through there. So we are on top of that project and trying to make sure it runs smoothly.
Thank you, Dave. I have also attended all of the public outreach and trying to stay on top of it on behalf of the residents and the businesses in the area. Finally, we have been approached, we, the city, have been approached by the Congress for New Urbanism. They are offering a five-day charrette to look at the Mariners Mile Corridor. We have got a very constrained corridor that is affecting the economic development and the richness of that corridor. There are businesses that would like to see change in there. I'm sure there are residents that would like to see change in there. And it was serendipitous and very timely that we were approached by this group to provide free services for a five-day design charrette. That charrette will start on Friday, October 17, with an opening presentation at the community room at 5:30. It will be ongoing through the 21st of October with times that start at 5 o'clock in the design, or I'm sorry, in the community room. All people, all residents, all business owners are welcome to attend and provide input. The goal of this is to gather as much information as we can about the current setting in the Mariners Mile, in the hopes that we get a lot of information that we can then sift into a plan down the future that would be subject to our citizens' advisory panel process and ultimately, the Planning Commission and the council. So there have been announcements made. There's been advertisements set out there. If you'd like more information, please look at our website or contact me. The CNU Design Charrette, October 17. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilwoman Selig.
Thank you. Last Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend the art exhibit put on by our Arts Foundation out in our civic green. It was very well-attended. A lot of great exhibits were out there by a lot of different artists. I think it just showed another example of how the civic center really is becoming the heart of Newport Beach for various community activities. And it was just another great use of our civic green area.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dagel.
Yes, I really appreciated the award earlier from Coast Keeper. Orange County Coast Keeper is the 2014 Friend of the... Orange County Coast Keeper is the 2014 Friend of the Coast Award. We're the only city recognized this year, and I really liked the quote by Dave Kiff in his insider guide. He said, "It's easy to forget the amazing work that our community has done to improve water quality and to protect the bay over the past many years." And certainly, the city of Newport Beach is truly a friend of the coast. Since our last meeting, we had a, went to the county of Orange where the Board of Supervisors heard our settlement agreement, the new agreement. And we have with us this evening Supervisor Morlock and also Alan Murphy of the Airport Director. And we're going to get into later the agreement. I'm sure everyone will probably have lots of comments, but I did want to state that it was approved by the county and the EIR was certified. So, that's wonderful news, and appreciate also the work of our staff and our community groups to make that happen. Secondly, we also had a ceremony to acknowledge the completion of a major renovation of Marion Bergerson Aquatics Complex. We put in new decking, we replastered the pool, new locker rooms, new scoreboard, state-of-the-art scoreboard, and just quite a few improvements. And Senator Bergerson was there, and she was just really excited and, and very grateful. The city council has really been a steady and consistent supporter of renovations at the aquatics complex. It's something really at the core of our community. That particular swimming pool has produced 10 Olympians, which is a dynasty. And we also have joint use, so all ages of the community. We have programs, swim programs. People can learn to swim and, and enjoy that particular facility. I also had opportunity to enjoy lunch by the Orange Wood Foundation, and the guest speaker was Andre Agassi, the tennis star. And he won four major tournaments, he's the only male tennis player to win four major tennis tournaments, and Olympic gold medal. His wife, Steffi Graf, has won like 22 major golf, tennis tournaments. But anyhow, he went from number one in the world to 141. And they asked him, they said, "So, I mean, what's it like to just get absolutely hammered?" And everyone wanted to know, "Well, if you're Andre Agassi, how do you approach adversity?" And I really liked his response. I could certainly relate to it in my own life. And he said, "You just gotta get up every day and say, 'I'm gonna get better. Every day, I'm gonna get a little bit better.'" And so, he slowly climbed his way out of that personal manhole and became a great tennis player again. And then finally, I wanted to thank Mike Pisani of our modification, that department that, that keeps the streets all clean. And I had some issues in the district with plants and making sure they're really manicured, and Mike took care of that, got his crews out there, so thank you. And for those of us termed out in the council, it's only a few more weeks we have these requests, but until we turn into corpses, that's how we want it taken care of. So, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Councilman Hen.
Just one, Mr. Mayor. Explore Ocean is an organization dedicated to the, to educating as many people as possible about our ocean. It's located in Balboa Village. Explore Ocean has educated thousands of school-aged children over the last few years, has made tremendous strides in that respect. They also sponsor the Explore Ocean Lecture Series, aimed at adults. And the series, by the way, is made possible by the Winslow Maxwell Trust. And I just wanted to sensitize people to the fact that these, these presentations in the Explore Ocean Lecture Series are very good presentations, well worthwhile to attend. The next one is being presented by Josh Stewart, who is an expert in manta rays and the preservation of that large ocean fish, I guess it is. And so, that presentation will be made on October the 23rd, 2014. The lecture be, there are two lectures that day, beginning at 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM at Explore Ocean in Balboa Village. And we hope you can make it. Thanks.
Councilman Curry.
Mr. Mayor, I was privileged to represent the city at the Newport Mesa First Annual State of the District Education Breakfast. And if you haven't really gotten to know what's going on in our schools, you would be very, very impressed, how each one of them is specializing in specific areas of education and really doing a terrific job for the young people in the Newport Mesa School District. I also was privileged to represent the city in Huntington Beach on Saturday night for the Surfboards on Parade Annual Gala. It was a fundraiser for Hoag Hospital, raising money to fight melanoma, which is a very serious problem for those of us who live next to the beach. It was an outstanding event, and I'm so proud the city was involved in it. Mayor Protem Selig mentioned the art in the park. Pamela and I were also there, which brings to mind the fact that our art exhibit in the park was recognized in a cover story article by Coast Magazine, along with an extensive article by Barton Brower, highly praising what we're doing here to expand the arts in Newport Beach and to make this a more livable community. I'm really proud of it, and I, as we, as Mayor Protem Selig indicated, we saw what could happen in a space where more than 1,000 people came to enjoy art, that some people would have turned into an asphalt parking lot if given their own way. So, choices and decisions matter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will bring just a couple of items to the floor. Our Newport Beach and Company, our branding operation, has released its 2013-2014 annual marketing report, and just a couple of the highlights that this year in January, hosting the BCS National Championships, was the largest event that Newport Beach has ever hosted and included 10,000 visitors and more than $3 million impact during that week to the city. And our conference sales department broke new records with 57,605 booked-room nights against their goal of 37,000. And that generated 12.6 million in gross hotel revenue and 37.1 million in overall economic impact for the city. Visit NewportBeach.com, grew in its visits, the website, by 27%. And this year, they have opened a 24, or seven-day-a-week, rather, a new visitor concierge center at Fashion Island, which is there to help provide guidance to the more than 6,500 people who stopped in to, to take their advice, and those visitors from China, Middle East, Canada, and throughout the United States. Very proud of the effort and accomplishments of Newport Beach and Company. And then, three of us, I think it was Councilman Curry, Selig, and Hen, I guess myself would be four, had the opportunity of participating in the groundbreaking for the new Newport Beach Country Club. Long overdue clubhouse facility, and, and it is going to be breathtaking. What is now an asphalt parking lot that leads up to a very nondistinct, well, did lead up to a very nondistinct building that's already been taken down, will be in use in October of next year for the next Toshiba Champions Golf Tournament. And the clubhouse will be Coastal Craftsman, it is called, in architectural style. It'll be about 15 feet above the grade that it is now with a terraced parking lot, and so when you drive by, instead of seeing asphalt, you're gonna see grass and trees. And it's gonna be a beautiful addition to the town and, and very proud of that. And so, with that, I'm gonna take prerogative as chairman to acknowledge that we are just an evening with very special guests today, and we have with us our supervisor, Supervisor John Morlock, and he is here to work with us, I believe, and make comment on item number 17. And so, I'm gonna move that item now for courtesy to the supervisor and his staff up to this point. We will take the new business, item 17, and then from that, we will move into the consent calendar. So, that's probably a surprise to staff that's shuffling everything at this point in time, but let's move forward with 17, please. Ready to go, then. Leilani, if you could...
So, item 17 involves the John Wayne Airport Settlement Agreement, EIR, and stipulation. I have a brief presentation I'm gonna go through. Wanted to try and remind everybody what this is about. This is the end of a long road. There we are at the end, smiling and a little twisted. We're a little twisted up here at the end of it, but we're happy. Couple of key terms we'll talk very briefly about. What are average daily departures, ANCA, the Airport Noise and Capacity Act? And just as an important reminder, this federal law, which passed after the 1985 agreement was in place, said that new restrictions cannot reduce or limit aircraft operations or affect airport safety. And then, I'll, I'll mention MAP once or twice. That means million annual passengers. Each of us counts twice, when we go away and when we come home. That's two, two counts. So, folks are familiar with the noise-based curfew. Here's what it is today, and you can see that the board is prohibited from changing the curfew before 2020. So, this proposal gives out another 15 years through 2035, with, as you can see, no change to the curfew. The second part of this proposal is that the passenger cap is amended, and today, the cap ends or must be amended by January 1 of 2016. And that, just noting, John Wayne Airport is currently at about 9.4 million annual passengers per year. The cap is 10.8. So, here's how that would change. We would, again, take away the end date in 2016 and move that to 2031, but allow some moderate growth, 11.8 passenger, sorry, for the first, up, up until 2021, the same cap stays in place at 10.8. And then, starting in 2021, it can go to 11.8, and then, for the next five-year period, it can go to either 12.2 or 12.5 million annual passengers, depending on whether or not a certain level of passenger count is reached during that previous five-year period. I can take questions about that if you'd like. The average daily departure cap changes as well. Here's what it is today. It's 85 of the Class A, and I'd refer to those as the loudest flights, with a caveat that doesn't always work that way, and, and four cargo flights, so 85 plus four. That cap also amends or must be amended by January 1 of 2016. So, here's how the change would look. We'd take out another, go another five years on the current limit, and then, the carriers could add another 10 for the, the 10-year period following January 1 of 2021. And then, that cap must change, end or would be amended by January 1, 2031. There's a restriction on loading bridges. It's in the current agreement, and that would, today, that says that there's 20, and that's the number in the terminals today. There's no cap starting in January 1 of 2016. This is the current agreement. That would go out another five years and then change to 2021, and then the cap would go away. But additional SEQA review is required if the airport planned a new project to add loading bridges. So, couple of quick questions we get. Does more MAP mean more flights? No, not necessarily, and that's important to remember what a load factor is. We all feel it when we're in a plane. Planes are more crowded. The more crowded the planes are, the more passengers you can fit in the same amount of flights. So, in 2002, flights were nationwide, were averaging about 70.4% full, and now they're 84% full, and that tends to climb. That number seems to keep going up, and again, we can all kind of feel that. Just here's an example, Southwest changing, that they fly a lot of 737-300s, and in 2002, if, if we were at 10.8 MAP then, that would have been 154 flights per day with that load factor. They're moving, they still fly a lot of 737-300s, but if they're moving to the 737-800, they can seat more people. To even reach 10.8 MAP, that's 100 flights a day versus 154, and to reach 11.8 MAP, it's 109 flights a day. Again, so making a lot of assumptions here, I just want to make that clear. Does 10 more Class A ADDs mean more loud flights? Not necessarily, and I'll, I'll show you why that is. But in 2004, there are about 113 total average daily departures. That's the amount of commercial planes flying out of John Wayne Airport in any day. It's about 113, and 80.24 of those are Class A. What we are seeing with a noise impact involves not the ADDs, but Next Gen, where you're see, the federal government FAA is moving towards a narrowing of flight patterns over certain noise monitoring stations. And one of the ones they try and aim for is Noise Monitoring Station Number 7. And the, the difference in a Class A and an E here is that one of them can go out below 93 decibels, the other has to go out below 86 decibels, and knowing that the human ear can detect about a three, a difference in 3 decibels. So, here's an example of how one plane, same plane can fly out, and one, it can be an A or an E. If it's going a shorter distance with fewer passengers, and it's still a 737, like to Santa Z, it could, it, it's gonna be less noisy. If it's carrying more passengers, more luggage, and more fuel, it could need to fly out as a Class A. One of the things we get a lot, questions about is they say, "We don't see planes flying and taking off the way they used to," which is the, the steep ascent and then the flattening out. And I want to make it clear that the planes were never required to do that, literally. What they're required to do is to meet certain decibel thresholds over these noise monitoring stations. You can see where the noise monitoring stations are. Each one has a decibel level that a plane must fly out at or below. So, as planes get quieter, they don't have to do that same takeoff procedure. Now, a lot of them still will, but the ones that don't are banking that they're a quiet enough plane that they can get past those decibel levels, and they are doing that. So, not gonna go through this whole slide, but here's what, what we said two years ago we needed to accomplish. We've accomplished all of the, of the ones in the green. As Councilmember Dagel mentioned, the Board of Supervisors just last week, or, sorry, two weeks ago on September 30th, certified the EIR and approved the county's signature to the stipulation that will go to court. We have two more things to do. One of them is tonight, and that's the city council's agreement to that. And then, we'd file those stipulations with the U.S. District Court for the agreement to be amended and extended. So, the EIR that folks have looked at contains these scenarios. I'm not gonna go into them. The EIR has been reviewed extensively. The recommended action tonight is to find that the EIR is adequate and that it's complete and complies with SEQA, that the stipulation itself is consistent with our airport policy, to direct the city attorney to execute the stipulation, and for the staff to file a notice of determination. So...
Four comments. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Well, this is an historic day, and I just think it's, I see many of the people in the audience who have worked so hard for so many years to get us to this point, and I think everybody ought to feel a tremendous sense of satisfaction at where we are today. And I, I know we'll hear from Supervisor Morlock in a moment, and I just want to say for the record what a great friend and partner he has been in this process, in protecting our community and in moving this process forward in a fair, equitable, and successful way, along with Alan Murphy from John Wayne Airport. I was at the Board of Supervisors when Supervisor Morlock and his colleagues adopted this. It was a great day for the community. It was a great celebration of consensus building and of moving forward for the future. So, Mr. Mayor, congratulations. This happened on your watch, under your leadership, and it's a great day for all of our residents.
I would like to, I'm sorry, please, go ahead. Councilman Dagel.
Looking at this issue, I always go back to our council policy. It's council policy A17. It says, "The city council's primary objective is to protect Newport Beach residents from the impacts of commercial aircraft operations at and from John Wayne Airport. The city council believes that the impacts are the JWA are now and will continue to be the most significant threat to the quality of life of Newport Beach residents. And for the last 30 years, the city and community groups concerned about adverse airport impacts have developed and implemented strategies to control those impacts, and these efforts, which have been supported by the county for the last 20 years, have made JWA one of the most community-friendly airports in the nation." And so, it's really through working with the city and the community groups and the county that the agreement was extended. And having chaired the Citizens Aviation Committee for many years, I've watched closely the various parties involved with it, and I would certainly recognize five individuals and entities that brought us to this day. The first is our city attorney. We talk about stipulations of agreements. This is a legal agreement. This is litigation that we're, we had to resolve. So, thank you for your efforts in managing this process. Secondly, is our city manager, Dave Kiff, for skillfully building the consensus and keeping everything on track and the schedule. Third is our community groups, the Airport Working Group and SPON, which is helped this time by Airfare. And those community groups have donated thousands of volunteer hours. And then, also, the county, our airport director, Alan Murphy, and our supervisor, John Morlock, for their leadership and their true partnership in working with us. And fifth is the And fifth is the city council. I read our policy. It is the highest priority of this airport, protecting our quality of life, and we've allocated the resources necessary to make this happen. So, I think it's a great day. It starts with a wonderful policy, and flowing from that is a successful agreement that's extended. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members like to make comment?
I would just add, once again, the, the support that we had from the Airport Working Group and from Airfare, the operational element of SPA that was very instrumental in developing the relationships with the corridor cities, which established that this was not a Newport Beach issue, it was a county issue. And I think that success was witnessed by the fact that the supervisors unanimously, under the leadership of Supervisor Morlock, moved forward in approving the approved project with the EIR, of which we are extremely supportive and extremely grateful. With that, I would like to offer the supervisor to make a few comments, if he would so be inclined. I've never known him not to be so inclined. But that one's taller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're overly kind. It almost tempts me to come here every week. This was a project that was high on the list the minute I was elected eight years ago. And so, it's been interesting to work through the process, and I'm really pleased with the outcome. You have an extended curfew. We have, I think, balance where the community and the carriers should be happy with our request for 15 years of an extension, which is a big ask. And it was, Mr. Kiff, a lengthy and long road with a lot of meetings, and I am very grateful to all of you for your participation and your cooperation and your professionalism. I would do want to do the same thing. I want to thank city council members, Mayor Hill, and Keith Curry, and Leslie Dagel were at the meetings and certainly enjoyed the process. I want to thank David Kiff, who I've known for 20 years, and it's been great to work with you, Dave, in this process. Aaron Harp, thank you very much for your participation. I believe Tom Edwards is in the room. So, Tom, thank you very much. I also want to thank Melinda Sealy, Jean Watt, Tony Curry. And then, on my staff, I'd also like to thank Ian Rudge and Mario Manero, who are no longer with me, but played a big role during the process. But also, I guess, want to thank Bob Wilson, my current chief of staff, for his assistance. But I really want to thank Alan Murphy. So, Alan, thank you for your professional guidance throughout the whole process. Mr. Mayor, this is one of my last official duties. Just like many of you, you are finishing your terms of office. So I wanted to thank each of you. Nancy, it's been great working with you on the Upper Newport Bay Executive Committee. You've been a real treat and a real delight to work with. I appreciate it. Tony, good to work with you. And Ed, keep having fun in Seal Beach. Rush, Keith. Dr. Hin, thank you very much. And Leslie, thank you. It's great to serve with you on the vector control, which is also a very unique opportunity. So with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. It's been an honor to serve these last eight years, to work with this city council. You have a five-star city. You should be very proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor. With that, please. With that, I would like to open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on Agenda Item Number 17?
Mayor Hill and members of the city council, my name is Jim Mosher. And it probably comes as no surprise to you that I would like to offer a somewhat different view of this. First point I would like to make is that the curfew predates the settlement agreement. And while the settlement agreement protects the curfew, the curfew would not go away if the settlement agreement went away. The second point I would like to make is that the limits in the settlement agreement have historically been a kind of moving target, which seems always to be set safely beyond any reasonable expectation for airport demand over the life of the agreement. I believe one has to live in a state of partial self-delusion to believe that the existence of a settlement agreement has in any substantial way limited the massive expansion of John Wayne Airport over the last 30 years. One has only to look at what was 30 years ago and what is today, and compare this to the expansion or lack of expansion at other regional airports. What the settlement agreements seem to have done is to have made us willing and largely silent partners to this expansion. This latest secretly negotiated agreement is a blueprint for a roughly 30% expansion over current passenger levels in the next 15 years, which, as far as the public knows, is based on nothing more than being a growth rate that the airlines are comfortable with. In fact, it seems to be a growth rate we are uncertain airlines can even achieve. So rather strangely, from the public's point of view, it offers them a bonus at the end if they can achieve a certain target level. I would have thought it would have been a more rational agreement, might have limited future flight growth based on something like population growth in the county, or some other standard, rather than setting what to the public appear to be arbitrary targets that we now have to live with. I believe population growth is expected, for example, to be considerably less than the 30%. As to the action by the Board of Supervisors, I personally would have hoped to see not unanimous agreement, but a very close 3-2 decision if the settlement agreement had been aggressively negotiated in the best interest of our city, and perhaps not to the wishes of some of the supervisors representing areas not impacted by the flights. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the public like to speak on this item? If not, then I'd bring it back to the council. It'd be appropriate for a motion.
Will we approve it?
Second.
That was a second first by Councilwoman Dagel.
Sure.
Second by Councilman Hin.
Two seconds.
All right.
Mayor Protem Selig.
He doesn't have a voting screen. All right, there we go.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. With that, we'll go back to the normal pace of the agenda, and I believe we are at public comments on the consent calendar.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar, items 1 through 12 for discussion. Public comments are invited on consent calendar. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Councilwoman Dagel, do you have any items to pull?
On number 11, there's a plaque going in at Goldenrod Foot Bridge and some other changes to people's visual environment. What I was hoping, if we could simply see a photograph of that new plaque and the landscaping so that the public is informed of changes there. A lot of people walk across that bridge. So thank you. Just looking for a photograph on that one.
It's in the report.
Well, I think the public, I don't think the public really reads the report, so if we can have a photograph, that'd be great. And then, secondly is, excuse me?
Sorry, I'm talking to Leilani. If you put that.
You want to do that now? Okay, great.
So this is the proposed memorial, is that the right? And then, this is what the plaque looks like. Sorry, I know Don Webb's here, and he'd do this much better than I would.
Great. Can you just go back to the first one and explain the changes? I think there's some new landscaping, too.
Actually, Don, you might want to come up and do that for me.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Don Webb, local citizen. And this is a project that has been something that I think is, I promised in this, O'Neill, I would try to get done in 2002. We're finally getting it done. The picture, please? In this particular picture, what we're doing is re-landscaping, re-landscaping the end of the street end, similar to what some landscaping is adjacent to the right. We're building a pedestal that is rock-faced, and the...
Pardon me, Mr. Webb. Just as a matter of protocol, if we're going to entertain comments on this, can we pull it? This is highly inappropriate.
Well, the idea wasn't to vote on it. It was only to show a photograph.
Well, we're almost through, so let's, yeah, let's move through.
The actual plaque looks like this. This is the actual size. That's the plaque that would be on the pedestal.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you did a really nice job with that. And then I did want to pull number 12. And I also wanted, upon the advice of the city attorney, recuse myself of, from item number, which was it, Aaron? That...
That'll be item number six.
Yeah, number six.
It will note a recusal on item number six. Councilman Hin.
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilman Curry.
Pull item eight.
Councilwoman Gardner.
I have nothing.
And Councilman Petros?
Just an acknowledgement that I will be recusing myself from item five because of the location of my residence.
Thank you. Councilman Selig?
I have none.
And I will be noting a recusal on item number five because of the location of my residence. So with that, I believe it will have a motion, and then I'll open it up for a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval to consent calendar items number 1 through 12, pulling item number 12, and item number eight, and noting a recusal by Councilwoman Dagel on item number six, recusal by Councilman, Mayor Hill on item number five, and a recusal by Councilmember Petros on item number five.
All right. Those that would be interested in speaking on the items remaining on the consent calendar, items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, and 11, anybody like to speak on any of those items? Come forth at this time.
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I'd like to speak about item number one, which is the minutes of the September 23 study session and regular meeting. As I often do, I submitted some suggested changes to that in writing, which are available in the lobby. And as one of you so kindly pointed out to me, my suggested changes themselves contain an error. In particular, in item number two of the suggestions, the word "session" has more "s"s in it than I acknowledged. And I trust that if you accept those suggestions, the city clerk will restore the proper number of "s"s to that word. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak on any of the items on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I think the clerk actually did, did us a nice service by typing up any amendments to the minutes. So if the Mayor Protem wanted to amend that emotion, we could adopt those amendments.
I accept that. Seconded the motion?
There is no second, Mayor.
I'll second it. All right. Thank you. Then I would ask you to please vote on the consent calendar.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
We'll move to item number eight. Councilman Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number eight is a consent. Rainbow is being acquired by Republic disposal. I'd like to ask if this item be continued to our first meeting in November. I believe that's the 11th. I had some questions about this that I didn't have an opportunity to get answered either by staff or by some of the vendors I called Republic, and didn't get a call back. For example, Republic already has a non-exclusive franchise. Does this duplicate that? There's some questions about whether or not this impacts some of the other businesses that Rainbow has on a exclusive basis, and what are the impacts of that? And also, I want to have the opportunity to talk to Republic about their business practices and vision going forward in Newport Beach. So I'd move that this be continued to the November 11 meeting.
I'll second that. We have a motion on the floor to move to November 11 in a second. Any council comments on that at this point in time? And I would call for public comments. Anyone from the public like to comment on this item number eight? Ain't none, I'll bring it back to the council. Ask you to please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
We'll move to item number 12, pulled by Councilwoman Dagel.
This is the 800 megahertz radio system for public safety, and I've seen it highlighted as something that involves considerable expenses. And I know our fire chief is with us. He has a great deal of expertise in radio systems. And first, let me say that the Orange County system is really ahead of the power curve in that there is a consolidated 800 megahertz system versus in Los Angeles County. If you go to LA County and you look at a California Highway Patrol dashboard, there's eight or nine radios, because they're constantly having to hop between frequencies as they go throughout the county. So, Orange County really had a lot of good thinking some years ago to do the 800 megahertz system. But there's been some changes in spectrum, and one of the changes impacting us is that the public safety is being asked to go from 800 megahertz to 700 megahertz. And part of what's driving that is when the federal government wanted to do tax relief, they looked around and they said, "Who's going to pay for the tax relief? Who's going to offset that?" And they saw that the telecommunications companies were making billions, and they wanted spectrum. So they said, "Okay, well, we'll auction off more spectrum, and we'll ask certain entities to vacate spectrum." So, for example, UHS, UHF, which wasn't efficiently used, and then all of the public safety. So we're being asked to move our, move this spectrum. And I had a number of questions, either the fire chief or the assistant to the city manager, about this system. The cost allocation, how that's worked out is always contested and contentious. And it looks like the allocations that we're using is by radios. Now, there's different ways to allocate costs. You can do it by population. You can do it by geography. You can do it by transmission time. So we're doing it by radios. So one of the issues was, how do we get to allocate in that way? I noticed, for example, Laguna Woods doesn't have many radios because they're only paying $550 a year, and we must have a lot of radios because we're paying $114,000. No, I understand Laguna Woods also has the county. So, one of my questions is the choice of allocation. And then also, with our radio counts, have you, have you really sort of whittled down the necessary radios, and any radios that aren't on the grid, aren't being counted? So if you could address that question. And then also, the overall interoperability. So if we have this system, is it truly going to work? So we have a big fire here, and everybody shows up. Is everybody going to be on the same wavelength and the same system? Or is everybody going to start using their cellphone? So I wanted to know about the interoperability. And then, the final question that I have is, in terms of new features, is any of this going to involve video streaming, or where are we going with the future with our public safety system? So those would be my questions. And if you could address those in no particular order, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Dagel. The effort to do this replacement to the 700-megahertz P25 system has been a many-year process. The CCCS group that oversees the Orange County radio system has a team that's been working on this and figuring out how to allocate the funds fairly. Thirty-three individual agencies...
Thirty-three individual agencies, including the cities of Orange County and the Orange County Sheriff's Group, have worked together to figure out an allocation. It got determined by the total group that a by-radio allocation would be the fairest. And so that decision was made several years ago to do that. We had one seat at that table of the 33, but I think there's, you know, many ways, as you said, that you can allocate, but that was the one that people settled on. Your second question of the number of radios, we do have a lot of radios. It is a question that I... Something I noticed when I was first looking at this about a year ago. I asked a bunch of questions of our staff, and to the credit of staff, actually, the number was much higher. I know our fire chief's done a lot of work to reduce the number of radios in his group. And we've had some changes in our public works, is the category it shows on the table, but it's really maintenance, operations, utilities, and public works. And they're in the process of whittling that list down even further. So our final number should go down, a number of radios. So it's something we've been working on. Reductions have been made, more to come. And it should reduce our total costs at the end of the process. Your third question was the interoperability of these radios with other agencies. I can speak on a more general level. The chief certainly knows more of the specifics. But I can say that a big part of this spectrum switch was to create an interoperability, not just between our local Orange County agencies, but with the state, and then with the federal agencies as well. So FEMA, Homeland Security will be able to have a communication across all those agencies, which hasn't been there before. So that's a big part of why we're doing this. Do you want to add anything to that?
Sure. Scott Foster, the fire chief. Interoperability, and actually, the radio system in general, what we're replacing here is the backbone. It's the towers, the microwave dishes. It's a legacy infrastructure that has to be replaced, that it's timed out. It's ready to be replaced. So when the FCC, who controls all our airwaves, made a commitment, and actually, a mandate in around 2004, saying, all our radio systems from this point forward are going to change to a digital structure. They're going to refine the spectrum so they can share a bunch of users. As you know, everybody's got a cellphone and television. Remember, all the TVs went digital. They're refining the spectrum so that more people can use the spectrum. And they're moving it around so that public safety, as well as other agencies, cellphone carriers, military can have their own piece of spectrum and not be interfered with another. The entire backbone throughout the entire country has to change, and it is changing. And the mandate says from the FCC is that when a legacy system is replaced, you can only replace it with a system that has a standard, a common standard called P-25. It's a P-25 standard that all public safety agencies have to use. The equipment has to be that, and it is only that way for interoperability. So other public safety agencies that are using that same bandwidth can communicate with each other from wherever you are. You're logged on to the system, so each agency will be given a radio plan that they will be able to communicate. This is an essential system. This system is so that the police department can work, so the fire department can work, and agencies around can communicate with each other. And it's specifically a radio system, two-way radio communication. Councilmember Daigle, you were talking about video and other things like that. That is not quite here. However, there have been movements through the federal government, and the president, and FCC to put what they call FirstNet. It's a broadband system in place, which is just in its incipient stages. It's been around for about seven years, and it's been more refined, which will give you more benefits of video and different enhancements for that type of technology. That's not this, and that's not here today. But it is moving our direction. This particular item that we're talking about is strictly an infrastructure replacement that has to be P-25 compliant. We've been saving money for it for a long time, and it's something we really don't have any choice to go ahead and approve.
Thank you for your excellent response. I appreciate it.
I'd move approval of the item.
All right. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Any further council comments? Then I would open it up to the public. Anyone from the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council and ask you to please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, public comments on non-agenda items.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any individuals from the audience that would like to make a comment on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward. That would be perfect. Thank you. Give us your name.
My name is Lorian Petry, and I reside at 1239 Bayside Drive. And I have just recently had some correspondence with our city attorney. I don't know if he recalls, but I'm going to take a second to read it, if I may. I originally addressed someone named Brian, and I don't think I'm saying this right, oh, Contino, and Matt Coslian, and they are part of the code enforcement. And here's my note. Okay. Hi, Brian. I believe I'm part of a long list of residents requesting the city remove all political signage attached to utility poles along Jamboree Boulevard and other major corridors. I reviewed the city's municipal code, and this signage is in clear violation of the code. Because of this, I believe the election process is being compromised. What's even more egregious is that most of the signs are for people currently serving on the Newport Beach City Council. More than others, these individuals should know the code and respect its enforcement. Please have these signs removed no later than 10:15, which is tomorrow. I've included your supervisor, Matt Coslian, on this email to ensure it is acted upon in a timely manner. Thank you, Lorian Petry. The response. Good morning, Lorian. Thank you for your email regarding election signs. Every Friday, we try to sweep the city for signs posted on public property. On Friday morning, I drove MacArthur Boulevard and Jamboree and didn't find any signs on city property. Please note that there are signs attached posted on Edison Utility Poles. These poles belong to Edison and are not considered city property. As such, city staff do not pull these signs. However, the city clerk's office has emailed all of the candidates, asking them to remove any signs posted on public property. As we get closer to the election, I'm sure there will be an increase in campaign signs. We will do our best to remove them in a timely manner. Thank you, Matt. Okay. My response to him. Thanks, Matt. So what I've read about not posting on utilities does not cover telephone poles or Edison poles in the city of Newport Beach, even though these are public utilities within city limits? The ones that are most disturbing are those on the tall wooden telephone poles on Jamboree. Actually, those are Edison poles. Should I contact AT&amp;T or Edison about them? Do they bill the city for their removal? Perhaps private citizens should remove them. Or should the individuals running for office? Or perhaps the individuals running for office could have their campaign workers remove them, since they are responsible for them? Could you answer all of these questions so the people of the city can have this addressed this week? It's gone on much too long. These are political yard signs on utility poles. It's my belief they belong on private property, not utility property. Response. Hi, Lorian. Temporary signs of any kind should not be placed on public property, including utility poles. However, city staff will not remove the election signs from utility poles as they belong to Edison. I would contact Edison at 800-655. Thank you, Matt. Okay. Now, Matt, thank you for sending me the phone number for Edison. I just spoke with the head of the line department at Edison, who said this is a city code violation and must be taken care of by the city. I was told by Edison that sometimes police are asked to remove the signage because it's a code violation. I was told it's not their responsibility, but the city's, to remove signs from their poles as part of code enforcement. The time and cost of this removal is to be shouldered by the city. Please contact the property city department.
Excuse me. Are you just about ready to wrap up?
I am.
All right.
To have this addressed immediately. I'm very glad you had me call Edison to hear it directly from them. Now my response came from our city attorney.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you very much.
Okay. May I ask a question?
Quickly.
Okay. Do you, Mr. Hill, and all of you, believe in the rule of law?
Thank you, ma'am. You can sit down now.
That was it?
I might offer some comments from the city management perspective, and then Erin might be able to chime in, too. One is that I've asked our staff not to get on a ladder and not to take down signs. I think it's very dangerous. I've worked for the city now almost 20 years, and this is something we go through every election cycle. And our... Residents do get upset about where the placement is, and we do try and sweep them where it's safe. But I'm not going to direct the staff to go and climb a ladder on a pole and take that down, especially when it's not private property. For me, it's not a safe situation for that staff member to be in. And again, I apologize that this is just kind of the way we've done business since, for as long as I've been here. But I don't see any reason to change that, again, considering the employee's safety.
Is it part of the code?
Well, I think I'll just add to that, just briefly, that, you know, we basically enforce the municipal code in a uniform manner. We don't favor any candidate or issue as far as how we go about enforcing the code. So the decision that's been made by management as far as how we're going to go about enforcing the sign code during the election cycle is being uniformly enforced. And we don't really have a back and forth. You kind of make your comments, and then you're welcome to come back in two weeks and make additional comments. But it's not really a back and forth discussion. I'd be happy to meet with you some other time.
I know, yeah. And I understand this. And in two weeks, we will be voting. So it did...
Thank you, ma'am.
My final email was that it would be taken care of after the election.
Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment on non-agenda items?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name is Laura Curran. I live in Newport Beach. I'd like to talk about the Mariners' Mile charrette that is being led by the Congress for New Urbanism. So as Tony Petros correctly outlined this week, the city is hosting a planning charrette, which is a forum where planning leaders come together with members of the public and talk about how you make a city a better place to live. And so I would encourage all of the members of the city who are interested in things such as at Mariners' Mile, like a walkable village, improving traffic flow, improving parking to attend. So in the principle, charrette's a good idea. What I'm concerned about is the lack of a clear process to pick the Congress for New Urbanism as a leader of the charrette. And that, if not in the letter of the law, in the spirit of the law, the agreement we have violates the contract selection process. So, first of all, the city's hosting the charrette, which is a five-day activity, and some of us will probably go and provide our input during that time. But the city on the website has not outlined a plan for Mariners' Mile planning. So we are getting a big planning process underway without a proven path for our planning. We don't know what the budget is for planning, and we don't know if there'll be a Citizens' Advisory Committee reinstated. Secondly, the Center for New Urbanism is providing its services, in theory, at no charge. But these projects have a value, according to Brenda Wisniski in city planning, of $150,000 to $300,000 of in-kind value. That would normally go through the planning process, where the competitive bid, and it comes through council for review. So we're picking a company, an organization, that is going to lead us through a planning process that none of you have signed off on. We are also not getting a staff report. So the only documentation that residents have about this is the agreement, which outlines the deliverables. I personally find that not to be enough. We're also paying $35,000 in travel expenses and a net contribution of $12,000. It's not clarified what this stands for in the agreement. Finally, the agreement does not list who the project principal is and who the subject matter experts are who are leading the charrette. These are standard items in a consulting agreement. It reminds me of saying, well, you know, a fancy car drives up, and they say, I'll give you a free ride. Would you get in that car if you didn't know who was driving it? We are going to conduct a five-day charrette, and the agreement doesn't specify who is leading the charrette. Now, maybe it's Tony Petros because he's a planning individual, and he's interested in these types of activities, but there's no way of knowing that. So again, I encourage all of the residents and businesses who are interested in Mariners' Mile, who've sat at Dover and PCH, who've admired Todd Ridgeway's new building, to go down to Mariners' Mile and participate in the charrette. But I also would ask our city council to support, and our staff, to support a planning process and a selection of contractors, which allows the public to know who we are getting into the car with.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, please.
Well, Mayor and city council members, my name is Devin LaBaleta. I have a letter to give to the city attorney. May I?
May.
I am here tonight to present a letter to the city attorney on behalf of Newport Beach resident and attorney Gary Wagadahl, who could not be here himself. Attorney Wagadahl is submitting a complaint to the city attorney that candidate Leslie Daigle has abused her position as a council member by violating the Newport Beach Municipal Code by utilizing the seal of the city of Newport Beach in her negative campaign email communications. In a blatant campaign effort, Ms. Daigle intended to give the impression that the communication was an official city email. Ms. Daigle's campaign email blast included the following. One, the official seal of the city of Newport Beach. Two, listed the return address at City Hall. Three, used her phone number, which is listed at City Hall. Four, included a contact link back to her city council member website. Five, a picture taken from the official city Newport Beach website. The text of the email itself blasted her opponent with negative community and touted why the voters should vote for her in the upcoming November 4, 2014 election. Additionally, Ms. Daigle violated state law, which prohibits use of city seal in this election manner. She wanted the receiver to believe that the email was coming from the city in her capacity as a council member, not a candidate. Her deception was intended to bolster the credibility of her negative campaign message. The Political Reform Act requires Ms. Daigle to put the email mass communication that is paid for by her campaign community. Ms. Daigle intentionally did not include the required disclosure because she wanted her defamatory negative campaigning to appear more abusive. Ms. Daigle was not authorized to send an election-related email using the city. Furthermore, since the email was not for election purposes, it could not be for city purposes. Ms. Daigle has blatantly violated the integrity of her position in the city of Newport Beach and misused taxpayers-supported city resources, using the city's seal with the intent to see voters into thinking the communication is from the city is a violation of Newport Beach Municipal Code. Taxpayers of Newport Beach trust that city attorney will be diligent in this manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have extra...
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
I have extra letters, if anybody wants one.
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I also want to speak about the election, but about Measure Y, the confusing and, I think, deceptive city ballot question that voters will see. I've tried to call your attention at least twice before that the numbers quoted next to where we have to vote yes and no don't add up with the text of the ballot measure. To the best of my knowledge, the numbers in the question are based on the assumption that 356 homes will be removed from Newport Ridge, and with them, the potential for a substantial amount of future traffic. I don't think Measure Y removes any homes from Newport Ridge, and since I don't like being lied to, I'm voting no. This is the land use map from the current general plan. Newport Ridge is here. The yellow is the subdivision map where single-family homes can be built. The brown is where multifamily residences can be built. And there's numbers on them saying how many in each of the brown areas. This, I understand, posted... This, I understand, posted on the city website, is what city staff tells us the map will be changed to if we vote yes. I, for one, can detect no difference in the subdivision map. I see no difference in the numbers there. If you can show me where 356 homes are being removed, I would certainly appreciate that. If you can't, I hope voters will be told what the correct ballot question should be. The second thing I wanted to comment about is developer fees. We have been told that one of the main reasons you put Measure Y on the ballot is that you think that the development that will occur under the amended plan will generate a bounty of development money that the city would not receive under the current plan. Yet the ballot question tells us a yes vote will reduce non-residential development by 375,000 and some square feet. I would like to know why you expect less development to create more or generate more fees. I can think of two possible answers. One is that you agree with the know-on-Y people that the future development being removed by Y is unlikely ever to be built, and hence unlikely to generate development fees. In that case, telling us yes is a vote to reduce development, when you actually think it will increase development is a lie. The other possibility is you think the fees have already been fully paid for the potential future development being removed, so that if it were built, it would generate no fees, but if you move it to another place, we can double-dip and change those, charge the same developer a second time for the same square footage. That doesn't seem very fair to me, and a strange position for a pro-business council to be taking. I don't believe that less development should generate more fees, and I'm voting no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak?
We received a more detailed comment from Mr. Mosher about the numbers. Does staff have any comment about how we get the numbers and to justify them?
Mayor Hill, Councilmember Gardner, if you like, I can give a little bit of background related to the Newport Ridge reduction of the 356 dwelling units. And the question that's being raised is whether or not the ballot measure accurately reflects city council's action in terms of reducing the number of dwelling units that can be built in Newport Ridge, and we at staff level believe that, yes, it does. You know, the 356 dwelling units that have been removed by council's action from Newport Ridge, from the land use element of the general plan, do not appear in Table LU-2, which is specifically for anomaly locations. And why those numbers are not shown in that table is because simply Newport Ridge is not an anomaly location in the general plan. Rather, you look at Figure LU-15, which is the statistical area N, and it depicts the land use designations for that area. And as Mr. Mosher did identify in his comments, Newport Ridge includes two land use designations. One is for residential multiple family, and one is for RS-D. It should be noted that the RS-D designation is located throughout the city, and it does not contain a numeric number adjacent to it as to the number of units. If you look at it today, you would not know how many units are allowed in that area. You go back, then, to the text of the land use element, which describes that within that designation, the density is limited to one unit per legal lot, and that is common throughout the city of Newport Beach. To be sure, staff is certain that the 356 unbuilt residential units were included in your action on July 22nd and in your adoption of the Resolution Number 2014-67. And I do want to note that Exhibit C, which was attached to the resolution, identifies in detail the project that the city council did approve on that evening. Again, we believe that the ballot measure accurately reflects the council's action, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer it.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the public like to make a comment on non-agenda item? All right, then we will move on to oral reports from the city council on committee activities. Councilwoman Gardner?
The Harbor Commission met Monday night and basically formulated its goals for next year. They will be finalizing them at the next meeting, and I encourage them, instead of presenting them to this council in November, to hold off until January and present them to the new council, so that we'll be seeing them in January.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Petros?
On the 8th, the Balboa Village Advisory Committee met. I had the honor and distinction of chairing that meeting. We reviewed the schedule, and there will be items coming forward to this council regarding the parking management plan for action at about that time. We reviewed the design guidelines, and I am very, very proud of the work done by staff, our consult, and the public in putting together design guidelines that will reshape and revitalize the Balboa Village. So some very, very good work done and a very well-purposed committee.
Councilwoman Selig?
The local coastal plan committee was supposed to meet on the 29th of this month, and I just received a communication from the staff today that they'd like to cancel that meeting. And do we have a new date yet on it, or to be determined?
Not yet, but generally, it's the Wednesday following the second council meeting in the month.
Okay, well, the reason is that the staff is putting together the final draft, if you will, for the committee to consider, and they need a little bit more time to get that together for us.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dagel?
I have none.
Councilwoman Hen?
I have none.
Councilwoman Curry?
I have none.
And I have none. We will move on to agenda item number 13, public hearing.
Mayor Hill, I must recuse myself. The city attorney advises me that an A-frame within 500 feet of my house is a conflict, perhaps, so.
You're kidding. Jeez.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we do have a brief presentation showing what these look like and the history of it. It's kind of up to you if you'd like to hear that or move forward. There they are, right there. That's what they look like.
I could dispense with the presentation, but I did want to, is everybody okay on that?
Yes.
Yeah. I did want to offer, though, a slight amendment to the proposed, the proposal here, and that is, I met with the Balboa Village Merchants Association this morning, and we reviewed this issue, and they've concluded that they would really like to have a one-year trial period to be able to use these A-frame signs in Balboa Village, recognizing there may be limited opportunities to use them. They do feel like there are some opportunities, and they would like the opportunity to experiment with it. So as I realize I'm catching people a little bit by surprise here, but is it appropriate, then, if I offered a motion to amend this, to provide for a one-year trial period for the Balboa Village to also?
I think that it was specifically noticed just for the Corona Del Mar area. To the extent the council would like to look at expanding the area, probably best to re-notice it and bring it back so that anyone else has an opportunity to comment on that, so bring it back for first reading, if that's the council's direction.
I would support that in the sense that I believe that there are other areas of town that would like to be included in that as well.
Well, actually, the notice actually was for the entire city. It was the planning, the planning commission did make a further recommendation to refine it to the Corona Del Mar area, but we could certainly bring it back and be explicit in our notice as to the geographic areas where it would apply.
Yeah, and I would appreciate, as long as we do that, if someone could take a little extra time with the Merchants Association in Balboa Village and go through the restrictions in this a little more carefully so that they have a little more clear idea of where they might be able to make use of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Got a question for Councilmember Hen. You're not suggesting that Corona Del Mar be subject to the one-year limitation, are you?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Further comment from the council? All right.
So do we need a motion, then, to continue this item, I suppose, to the next council meeting, October the 28th?
Well, why don't we approve Corona Del Mar and then bring that back?
Yeah, another path would be to approve what you have now, and we'll just do a separate ordinance, expanding that, if you'd like.
That's fine, that's fine with me, and I therefore move the item.
Second.
All right. Any further council comments?
Before you vote, is that clear with staff? That's an acceptable path? Okay.
All right, I'd like to open it up to public hearing. Anybody from the public like to speak on item number 13? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action. Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title. For ordinance number 2014-17, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach approving an amendment to Title 20 zoning code of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to allow A-frame signs in the Corona Del Mar Commercial Zoning District. The motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Gardner recusing herself.
Thank you. Item number 14, please, and Councilwoman Gardner, please. Oh, she's back.
I'm back.
All right. So Mayor and councilmembers, this item has to do with the vacation of a portion of Buena Vista Boulevard, and this is on the peninsula close to Bay Island, and I'm stalling to let Dave Webb get up the PowerPoint so you can see exactly where this is, and I'll hand this over to Dave for further comments.
Thank you, Dave, for the stall. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we're bringing this back, as we noticed last time, that we have a request to vacate a portion of Buena Vista Boulevard, and that is on the screen above and in your staff report tonight. This runs between 304 and 350 Buena Vista Boulevard. This is a right-of-way that was dedicated on the original map back in 1906, I think, and it has never been developed into a street. It basically exists of a public sidewalk, six foot wide, that runs along here between Bay Avenue and Edgewater Avenue. And then there's the rest of it. It runs from 35 feet wide down to 30 feet wide, and beyond the six-foot right-of-way, excuse me, the six-foot sidewalk, the rest of it is landscaped and used by the various residents who live along there through encroachment agreements under policy L6. So the request tonight is to go ahead and vacate a portion of this right-of-way, maintaining 10-foot with, in that 10-foot, we would have a six-foot or up to an eight-foot sidewalk in the future that allows pedestrian access through this area. The rest of the existing right-of-way would be vacated to the properties along the bayside. It is a unique street. The properties on the bayside are also owned by the same folks that live across on the alley side of the property. They split the lot, but it's two different properties, and so we'd be vacating this as open space towards the bay. And we'll be open to any questions, if you'd like. With that, I had just a couple of quick pictures to give you some ideas of what this looks like if you haven't been down there. This is Buena Vista. As you look down the street, you can see the six-foot sidewalk there and the landscaping towards the bay. That's all in the public right-of-way. We'd be maintaining that six-foot sidewalk, along with another four feet, giving us the ability to widen that at some point to eight feet of the sidewalk, and the rest would be given to the property owners. You can see in the pictures that the property owners already use that public right-of-way now under encroachment agreement. They have various patio structures in their furniture and other items, and that would all be maintained and able to stay there. We have a covenant that goes along with this vacation that would restrict the use of that property to basically the UCC now, and then landscaping or any other features couldn't be any higher than 42 inches to maintain the view of the bay. With that, we've got a resolution we'd like to propose for your adoption tonight that would continue with the vacation of this right-of-way.
All right. Any questions of staff, by council? Councilwoman Gardner?
Oh, go ahead, Tony. Just on talking about maintenance in the agreement, and it says that we can, as far as trees, we want a canopy of seven feet, and when you don't have seven feet, then it should be, what do you call it?
Laced.
Laced, yes. Where it doesn't damage the tree. Now, I'm assuming, or am I perhaps not correctly, that this is relating to current planting, because obviously you may have planted, if I were living there, I may have planted something that cannot be trimmed to 42 feet, 42 inches without a problem, or some trees probably can't be laced without some damage. But would this, is there's any kind of controls as far as future planting so that people are aware that they, what they plant should be a tree, if they're going to plant a tree, that will eventually have a canopy of seven feet? Or are we just sort of going on good faith on this, or how do we do that?
The controls are in the covenant, and basically says that all new planting would have to be of a tree, have to be seven foot clear to the bottom of the canopy, and then trimmed up, and any new vegetation would have to be 42 inches or lower.
So anything new would have, just automatically, they'd have to look at that as part of what of their selection?
Yes, the lacing refers, there are several trees and plants on there that they want to keep.
Right, well, that's what I thought it meant, but I want to clarify. Thank you.
Councilwoman Petros?
I'm going to take a swat at the hornet's nest here. This encroachment easement has some value to it. Convince me that we are not giving that value away without being remunerated.
You, this vacation involves about 15,000 square feet of right-of-way going to the coastal side. The value in that can be looked at several ways. If you're looking at it as a vacation, we have no value to begin with. It's someone else's property, and we're giving it back to them because we're not using it. The value would be if you see anything in here that the city would, if we ever wanted to do a street there at some point in the future, I don't think that'd be probably feasible because it's only 30 feet wide. It'd have to be a one-way street or something. So the big value here is to the public views, maintaining that, maintaining the pedestrian walkway through there for access between the two streets, but the value of having a street there, I don't see a lot of value there. So other than that, you've got right-of-way tied up that would otherwise be put into private hands, different uses, maybe collecting property tax, things like that on it.
And we all could just say, I think, emphasize what you said, that with these covenants, we will actually be, over the course of time, improving public views from what they are today, and if they wanted to, for example, rebuild a brick structure that they had, it would have to come down, if it were tall now, it would have to come down to the height expressed in the covenants.
That is correct. There are a few structures out there now that are higher than 42 inches. We'd grandfather them in. When they go to rebuild those, they'd have to be lower, and your view would improve.
But there would also be some immediate rollback of obstruction of public view in terms of landscaping that's currently not, you know, compliant. That would have to be changed.
There is, and this picture right in front, you'll notice a hedge there, and that hedge is about, if I remember, 48 inches, and it's going to have to be cut down immediately to the view plane.
And, and these covenants will be recorded as against the deeds, you know, so there's just, you know, we have much more certainty here going forward, and I think that's a good thing, too. I think this is a nice solution because it's been very cooperatively arrived at amongst the residents and the city, and takes very good note of the public's concern for views and preservation of views, and so I think it's all around a good answer. That will have permanency associated with it, and with that, I'll move the item.
I'll second that.
All right. Anyone from the public like to speak on item number 14?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jim McGee, and I represent 18 homeowners who own the 21 lots that comprise the entirety of Buena Vista Boulevard. The residents are completely supportive of the staff-recommended partial vacation of the public right-of-way. It's a very reasonable and practical way to provide for the current and future needs of both the residents and the city in a way that will relieve the city of its maintenance obligations and the attendant cost of maintaining the landscape and structures that are in the current right-of-way that's going to be vacated, and it will also allow the residents who are subject to a right-of-way easement for a public roadway that could never be built to use their land in a way that is consistent with their ownership of it. The other benefit to the city, as already mentioned, is that it will provide, through a restrictive covenant that will be recorded, the preservation of bay views in perpetuity in a way that will actually not just preserve the view, but enhance the view that is currently there today. It will require that a good number of the landscaping components be trimmed to a 42-inch maximum height, and in connection with any of the trees that currently have a canopy that is lower than seven feet, to either cut that canopy up to a seven-foot height or, in the alternative to, if it can't be done without injuring the health of the plant or without killing the plant, to lace it to an opacity standard that the city has and which is set forth in the covenant. I've worked over the past eight months with the city staff and with Councilman Hen to craft the language of the restrictive covenant that is going to be recorded in the event that the council approves the resolution, and am confident that it does accomplish all of the goals of each party to the agreement in a way that will maintain public views into the future of the bay, and therefore, I heartily recommend that pass And therefore, I heartily recommend the passage of the proposed resolution of partial vacation of Buena Vista Boulevard.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this item?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosier. I don't have a strong opinion about this item, although I would be cautious about giving away public rights of access. What I find especially intriguing about this item is the coastal commission, who met here last week, on Friday, had scheduled an item about the vacation by the city of Dana Point of a public road that was on a bluff top and the first public road adjacent to the coastal resources. And this recommendation you have before you certainly seems to be modifying, at least theoretically, the use that the public has and the access public has to this first road right on the bayfront. And I'm just curious whether this change to, at least theoretically, public access requires a coastal development permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to speak on this item? Councilman Petros, I see your light on.
Mr. McGee made a comment, and I just want to make sure. When I read the covenant, it was that there had to be the seven-foot clearance or lace the tree. There was no condition for whether or not it would damage the health of the tree. Do we have any standards about when we want the seven feet or lacing is appropriate? Because I could see that whole thing being a wall of a laced tree. Can we ensure that we get view corridors and not lacing of trees?
Well, as I understand it, the lacing only applies to the trees that exist today. If a new tree was to go in, and we talked about that, we did not want a wall, they would have to have it cut up to seven feet. So they have to plant a pretty big tree to begin with, and all the bushes below to have to be kept at 42 inches. So it's only lacing the trees that exist today, and there are only a handful of those.
Well, I thought about that, too, but then I also thought, these people want their view, so they're probably not going to want to plant a wall of trees right in front of their view of the harbor, so.
Right. We only identified just a couple, maybe at most three, trees that might have either a health issue that might prohibit lacing, but I think we'd be able to work those down. So overall, the view is very much protected and very extensive. All right, I believe we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously 7-0.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number 15. Councilman Selig?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this item since my wife is one of the candidates under consideration.
At least you didn't say you had property that you owned.
Not here.
We seem to have a lot of people recusing themselves from this item. All right. Staff?
Item 15 is the appointment to the city arts commission to fill the vacancy that expires on June 30th, 2017. The vote will be conducted by paper ballot and simultaneously. And I will read and announce the results, including the vote tally. Each member of the city council will cast one vote on the paper ballot. And in order to be appointed, the applicant must receive at least four votes. And this process is similar to what will happen for item 16, EQAC. Councilmember Daigle votes for Neil Buttermore. Councilmember Hen votes for Lynn Selich. Councilmember Gardner votes for Neil Buttermore. Councilmember Petros votes for Lynn Selich. Oh, sorry. Councilmember Curry votes for Lynn Selich. And Mayor Hill votes for Neil Buttermore. That's three to three. We'll need to do another vote between Neil and Lynn until we get a 4-2 vote.
I voted for those.
Councilmember Daigle votes for Lynn Selich. Councilmember Hen votes for Lynn Selich. Councilmember Curry votes for Lynn Selich. Councilmember Petros votes for Lynn Selich. Councilmember Gardner votes for Neil Buttermore. And Mayor Hill votes for Lynn Selich. Lynn Selich fills the vacancy on Arts Commission. And now we have the vacancy for the -- oh, sorry. Mayor Protem Selich first. Do we need -- we should also have public comment on those, Mayor. Sorry.
All right, thank you. Any public comment on item number 15, appointment of a new city arts commissioner? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 16.
Item 16 is appointment to Environmental Quality Affairs Committee. Mayor?
Maybe public comments before. Okay. Are there?
No time like the president, Mayor.
Yes. Are there any public comments on item number 16? Seeing none, we will continue.
Councilmember Gardner votes for Mark Tabbert. Councilmember Daigle votes for Joan Penfield. Councilmember Hen votes for Joan Penfield. Councilmember Curry votes for Joan Penfield. Mayor Protem Selich votes for Jack Callahan. And Mayor Hill votes for Jack Callahan. So vote number two will be between Jack Callahan, Joan Penfield, and Mark Tabbert. Again, we need four votes in order to be appointed. Councilmember Daigle votes for Joan Penfield. Councilmember Curry, Joan Penfield. Councilmember Petros, Mark Tabbert. Councilmember Gardner, Mark Tabbert. Mayor Protem Selich, Jack Callahan. And Mayor Hill, Jack Callahan. Now, we're still back to Jack, Joan, and Mark. I only have one more. I only made three sheets.
Who left?
No, one sheet.
Oh, one sheet.
Councilmember Petros, Jack Callahan. Councilmember Daigle, Jack Callahan. Councilmember Hen, Jack Callahan. Councilmember Curry, Jack Callahan. And Mayor Protem Selich, Jack Callahan. And Mayor Hill, Jack Callahan. Jack Callahan is appointed to EQAC.
Thank you very much. At this point in time, we will move to motion for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the item on any action taken by the city council either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Do we have anyone, any council member that would like to move for reconsideration? Seeing none? Almost made it by 7:30.